I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the November 25th County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your, excuse me, your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he could assist you with that. Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the November 18th, 2014 agenda. Is there a motion? November 25th. Agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion. Excuse me. The November 18th.
November 25th.
It's November 25th today.
Okay, I'm looking at this, sorry. Okay. I have a motion to approve the November 25th agenda. Do you have a second?
A second.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of November 18th, 2014.
I'll move the November 18th minute and I also would like to make a supplemental motion to amend the commission minutes from November 12th of 2014 along with it.
I have a motion and a second.
Do you have any comments? Kirsten, did you want to just read those or Cindy, did you want to read the changes?
Kirsten has the changes to reduce.
Well, just out of clarification, do we want to go ahead and vote on the approval of the 18th ones before we address the 12th ones?
Sorry, we are just getting all on.
That's okay. That's fine. Do I have to do it by roll call?
No, Gerald is not here.
He's not here yet.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion for 11:18 minutes first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
And item B is consider a motion to amend the commission minutes from November 12th, 2014.
All right.
And Kirsten has a comment on it.
All right, thank you. It came to our attention in reviewing the November 12th minutes from your meeting on that Wednesday, you were considering acceptance of a grant for certain funds for the state's attorney's office to hire a limited term to DUI prosecutors as well as a legal office assistant. It came to our attention in the minutes that there was some question about the term of that grant and so we wanted to clarify the minutes to make that discussion that we had about the term of that evident in the minutes. So this is reflected in our meeting video and what went on in it, but I would propose the following amendment be made to the November 12th minutes and I'll read it in its entirety just for public sake. Kirsten Katmeyer, Chief Civil Deputy State's Attorney, reported the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office has been awarded a grant from the South Dakota Department of Public Safety in the amount of $181,059.61. The three-year grant will fund two full-time DUI vehicular crimes prosecutors and one legal office assistant to oversee and track all DUI cases in Minnehaha County. And this is added with the acceptance of the terms of this grant, Minnehaha County authorizes the recruitment and hiring of these three staff members for a limited three-year term starting January 1st of 2015. In response to a question from Commissioner Kelly, Katmeyer noted that any employment of these grant-funded positions after the expiration of the authorized three-year term is allowed only with the further approval from the commission. And then the rest of it is as it stands. Motion by Barth, seconded by Pecus to accept the U.S. Department of Transportation National Highway Traffic Safety Administration grant funds for the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office in the amount of $181,059.61 with four ayes.
Are there any other questions on that amendment? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment from November 12th meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $4,174,050.47 and elections expenses in the amount of $54,599.49.
Is there a motion?
Pay the bills. Seconding the bills.
And a second. Is there any comments? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, today's bills are pretty high. Part of the reason is we have basically a $3 million debt service. We have $173,000 to one contractor from the highway department. We have $248,000 going to the library for our share. And I know that just on mental health bills, there are 250 individual bills for various things under mental health, which is one of our obligations serving the indigent here in Minnehaha County.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Any other comments on bills? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. The next item is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
I would move the routine personnel action.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions for Carrie? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is a special commission action to consider a request to promote Vince Fluckey Information Technology Department from a programmer analyst one to a programmer analyst two, position grade 21, step five. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. The reason that this is listed as a special commission action request is because it's not a ladder promotion. In other words, some people will transition from a level one to level two after certain years of experience and once they're performing certain functions. In this case, it's not a ladder position, which is why it's reflected in this section for you.
Any other questions for Carrie?
And Monty's here as well if anyone has questions.
Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments?
This individual's done an awful lot for us in the public defender and this will continue on state's attorney and public advocate, so I think it's a proper move.
Just for clarification, it's the software package that's used in this office.
Software package, yeah, that's been used in these offices, yes. I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item C is consider a special commission action request to reclassify vacant administrative assistant position in the juvenile detention center to an administrative secretary position, grade 10.
Good morning again. The reason for this request is the position responsibilities have changed a little bit since it was initially classified during the Condry study. It used to involve some supervisory responsibilities, which are no longer there. So we're asking for the classification to reflect the level of the position. And Monty's here if you have any questions for him.
Are there any questions on this reclassification?
Plenty of work out there. I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. There are no application for abatement. The next item is notice and requests. Item A, notice by the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources of proposed issuance of general surface water discharge permit for non-discharging interstate rust areas, permit number SDG 027359. And item B is a notice by the U.S. Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Service of extended comment period for proposal FWSR5ES20110024 to list the northern long-eared bat as endangered under the Endangered Species Act. Those notices have been put on file in the auditor's office. Item C is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for Highway Department project MC 126 BR-14 to replace structures 50-143-120 located on Highway 126 approximately one mile north and one and a half miles west of Crux. DJ Boothby.
Good morning, DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This project is for 2015 construction, as were some of the ones that we did the last couple of weeks. We're hoping to advertise in advance of the construction season to make sure we get the biggest bang for a buck, so to speak, with our contracting prices. This bridge is on a county highway system. There's actually a bridge and a box culvert that are immediately adjacent to one another right now. Both of them are in very poor shape. The proposed replacement is with a triple-barrel box culvert, a cast-in-place box culvert. An estimated cost is about $400,000. Commissioner Kelly, the highway department did conduct a traffic count.
I appreciate that.
460 was the traffic count that we took on it over the summer. So if you guys have any questions, I can answer them now.
If I'd have known you were doing a traffic count, I'd have just gone over a whole bunch more times.
Yeah.
I'd have just gone that way.
You kind of frowned upon that.
Yeah, but I live out there. I could have just drove that way. Any other questions for DJ?
I'm not cheating the system.
I'll make the motion. Cindy's Bridge.
I have a motion.
Cindy's Bridge.
I have a motion and a second to approve the highways notice to bidders. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I actually had two calls related to the front line that was this last week or no, it was 60 Minutes talking about the road infrastructure. I'm sure you had a chance to see it, but you know, it's so interesting that they're actually reporting on that now because you were at the way front end of that and I want to say thanks to all the work that you and your staff have done to look at the problems that we have with our bridges and roads. I really think that we got our arms wrapped around it and that article is just nothing more than validation of the extra work that you've put in. So thanks, DJ.
Appreciate that, Commissioner.
Our highway has done a lot of bridges, a lot of bridge work this last year and taken a lot off the list, so thank you very much.
We replaced seven structures this construction season along.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hagerger, can I ask one more question?
Yep.
So DJ, when we do replace sort of an old bridge structure with the box culvert and stuff, what's the length that we expect a box culvert to last?
You know, 75 to 100 years is definitely not out of the realm of possibility.
Thank you.
It's wonderful.
Follow up on that. What approximately is the difference between a box culvert and a bridge? If we were to do a bridge here, would it be a million dollar deal?
We do a TSNL study, type, size, and location initially when we start a project. And then we, at that time, we evaluate several different structure types for what is the most economical or efficient structure to replace what is there right now. And in this case, we looked at triple-barrel box culvert. We did look at bridges and when you get to 45 to 50-foot-long structure, that's where you start looking at a bridge as opposed to a box culvert. Anything less than a 45 or 50-foot bridge, you can probably do with a box culvert and come out about the same financially. And the maintenance on a box culvert is a lot less than the maintenance on a bridge and the life expectancy of a box culvert usually should be longer than a bridge. And so if we can, we like to do the box culverts instead of bridges.
Good. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no planning and zoning notices today and there are no petition for compromise of lien. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when if you would like to speak to the commission on something that is not on the agenda for today, you could come forward and identify yourself. Seeing none, we will move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is consider a resolution giving final approval to a project with the Augustana College Association and the issuance of economic development revenue bonds to finance such, excuse me, project and permit reimbursement of certain project costs from bond proceeds. And Sherry Roder is not here.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sherry is visiting her parents over Thanksgiving break, so I'm Tom Meyer with Augustana College. I've been working with Sherry on this project and happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for Tom this morning? I don't think so. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Well, just that Minnehaha County, I think over 10 years ago, actually did a study when we were awarded some CDBG, Community Development Block Grant money. And I think Hugh Grogan actually went back and had to actually classify to make sure education was actually one of the priorities for Minnehaha County. And amazingly, it made the top 10. So this is right hand in glove with absolutely a wonderful partner in our community, Augustana College, and I think that it makes all the sense in the world.
And to reiterate, this is not costing Minnehaha County anything. So I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item 11 is consider a motion to approve resolutions of sale for tax deeds 82442-29650-20569-50507-25890 and to authorize the county treasurer to issue quitclaim deeds. Bob Letts.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Letts from down the auditor's office and I'll give you my little report on what happened on Saturday, November 15th, 2014. The auditor's office held the annual tax deed sale in the foyer of the admin building. Nine buyers were in attendance. At the start of the tax deed process, we had a total of 14 properties that needed dispensation. The commission decided at the recommendation of the appraisal board that three of the properties would be donated to Southeastern Development Foundation for the development of affordable housing. Four of the properties were gifted to the city of Sioux Falls for drainage and the remaining seven were put up for auction. Following situation seemed prudent as a course of action on that day. Number one RD ID 11 or 11897 is a larger landlocked parcel on the southwest edge of Sioux Falls. It was getting no action on the bidding and I sensed it was worth more than where it was heading. So I exercised the county's option to retain that parcel and tried on a future sale. Probably need to mow it a couple of times next summer, but there are no structures or sidewalks on the parcel. Number two RD ID 24029 is a larger landlocked parcel out in Humboldt that was not receiving any offers either. And I sensed it was worth considerably more than what it was heading for. I didn't want to give it away, so I exercised the county's option to retain that parcel as well and tried on a future sale. Will probably need to mow that next summer a couple of times if there are no structures or sidewalks on that parcel. And then we get to the sale items here. Number three RD ID 82442 was sold to the adjoining landowner out in Humboldt. The $1,200 sale price was slightly greater than the delinquent taxes on the parcel and it seemed like a reasonable recourse considering the location. RD ID, number four RD ID 29650 was sold for $11,000. The lot has an older 1930s-era home on it and the son of the deceased still lives in the dwelling even though the water and electric are shut off and have been for some time. The new owners expressed a desire to work with that occupant until at least this spring. But there's other things coming into play on that property and I'm sure they'll hear a little bit more about it. Number five RD ID 20569 was sold for $6,500 to the adjoining landowner in a commercially zoned area of Brandon. It is a gravel-covered lot between businesses commonly used for parking. Number six RD ID 50507 was sold for $2,500 to a nearby neighbor in the Augustana neighborhood. It has lien issues on it and will take time to do a quiet title action on it. Number seven RD ID 25890 was sold to the same couple for $4,000. It is a long residential lot in the older end of town. One-third of the lot is a very steep hill that will require a complex set of stairs to the street and auto access is from the alley only. It had a structure that the city removed. And today I'm requesting the following action, that we approve the resolution to sale for RD IDs 82442-29650-20569-50507 and 25890. I stand by for questions.
Any questions for Auditor Letts?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly.
Bob, on the first one, 11897, is there a way, with not getting any bids or anything, can you negotiate with surrounding property owners to sell that thing?
Well.
You say it's landlocked, is that...
It is landlocked and it backs up to a cornfield. There's no access to it at this point. And you know, I think in the future, this is going to be worth a little bit more, you know, as time goes on. The property itself has a large pile of black dirt. We made Lloyd Olson aware of that and I think he was going to talk to DJ about that because we may want to look at it if it is good black soil to use it on some of the projects because black dirt always comes at a premium depending on how far away it is from there. You know, the potential too for this spring of having a sale, nothing would stop us from having a sale this spring should you desire to do that. And that was something that I wanted to consider too and maybe do a little bit more background work like you're talking about. All those people that have backyards that back up to that, maybe contact them and find out if any of those homeowners are interested in that parcel as well.
It would be nice to get rid of it, I assume, if we could get something out of it that was reasonable.
But you know, the way the sale was heading, I just didn't want to give it away for a couple, three or 400 bucks. I mean, nobody was bidding on it at all and I was going backwards on the sale price. So I thought, well, being as it is landlocked, we don't have to shovel, there's nothing to maintain on it. I thought it wouldn't hurt us to keep it until at least spring.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolutions of the sales for the tax deeds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 agreements between Minnehaha County and Volunteers of America Dakotas for operation of reception center and evening report center in conjunction with the JDAI projects. Aaron Serska.
Good morning, Aaron. Good morning, Commissioners. Aaron Serska, JDA coordinator, and I'm asking for your approval to sign the next calendar year contract for the reception center service and the evening report center service. These continue to be a vital part of JDAI success and keeping youth within the community safely.
Are there any questions for Aaron? Look for a motion.
So moved.
Checkup.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, Aaron.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign construction change order number one for a decrease of $1,861.90 to the contract with pram construction for minor additions and subtractions of various field-measured quantities on MC 253-460 BR-14. DJ Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners again. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This contract is for two structures, 50-060-089 and 50-063-090, which is five miles north and three miles east of Humboldt, two structures that were done on gravel roads this year. These are field-measured quantities for seven different items in the contract. That's a result of negative $1,861.90. As per our purchasing policy, we have to come and adjust the final contract amount to match field-measured quantities. So that's all that this is doing and then we'll process the final pay application.
Make a motion to authorize that change. Checkup.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Thanks, DJ.
Item 14, consider a motion to appoint Dr. Bill Smith to the County Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. Robert Wilson.
Robert, I can take this if you want to save your voice. Go for it. As you know, one of our members, Craig Anderson, resigned some time ago from that commission. We picked Bill Smith. Bill was, Dr. Smith was with the school board or Board of Education, whatever you call it, for a long time and I think you're very familiar in town. I'll make note that yesterday, Robert and I went down early. We went down Sunday night because we had to be back for this meeting, but the rest of the group went down to Kansas City, the sheriff and all the rest of them went down yesterday morning and Bill Smith did go with them. So it was good because that was really a good indoctrination for him as to what we're looking at and I'll speak to it a little bit later, but we think Dr. Smith will be a very, very good member for us and we'd like to urge your approval.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding this appointment? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion. Second, then.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Dr. Bill Smith to the County Criminal Justice Advisory Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 15 is a discussion about the process for filling anticipated commission vacancy. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson, thank you very much for a little break on that first one, Commissioner Kelly.
I was with him in the car on the way back and knew it was going to be a little weak today.
As you're all aware, Commissioner John Pecus was elected to a judgeship position on election day here earlier in November and after the first of the year, he will be sworn into that new position and therefore will have to resign his position here on the county commission. State law illustrates and lays out that the process for filling that position will be the responsibility of the remaining four commissioners and in the case when it's a remaining odd number of commissioners, the county auditor is also involved in that process. So it'll be the remaining four commissioners plus auditor Bob Letts. And while I'm not going to speak to the particulars of the statute that direct this process, I would leave that to Mr. Katmeyer. It is clear that the process and the actual process you use to fill that position is much less well-defined. What is defined is that this is a process that you start after that vacancy occurs. So at this point, we are here just with a discussion to give you an opportunity to talk as you may like about how you want to go about that process. And one thing that as an office we would suggest is that, you know, we have, it's no secret, we've been contacted by a number of people around the community who have expressed some interest in the position. And one thing that we would recommend is just a way to formally recognize those who have expressed an interest is you may wish to ask those interested parties to submit a formal letter of interest and a resume to, as a, to create a record of their interest in the position and then give you a starting point to move forward. And then beyond that, this discussion was designed as really your opportunity to discuss if you'd like, the process that you would like to use to fill that position. And again, because that process cannot get underway until the vacancy occurs, at this point, that is only, can only be a discussion at this point. So I would stand by for any questions or open it up to a discussion as you would like to initiate.
Commissioner Pecus.
To get the process started, I will prepare my resignation later today, obviously with the idea that it will go to the end of the year. So let's go ahead and get the, is that what you're needing? Just go ahead and have the resignation.
At this, no, no. And if that's, that's not at all the, if that's what I'm intending, no. We don't need that until, we're not looking for a timeline for me or anything like that. I'm just looking to lay out the process and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Katmeyer.
I guess from the language of the statute, and I did give you a legal briefing on this, but you know, it's straightforward in statute that even if you were to submit the actual document with an effective date of the end of the year, it's when it's effective, not when it's turned in that the process can start. So feel no pressure with that because it's when it's effective. So just so everyone's clear on that, of what the statute says. As Mr. Wilson mentioned, there's not a real strict defined procedure in statute as to how to do this appointment. I think you're given a lot of discretion on how you want to approach this. Again, my legal briefing kind of went over the pertinent statutes and of course, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them too.
Commissioner Kelly.
One of the things I think we need to consider is whether or not we want to make a caretaker appointment. I think there's a lot of merit to making caretakers to someone who would serve the two years and that we'd have to find someone who has already got a pretty deep knowledge of process and government, but it would, the voters are the ones who elect the commissioners. Each of us stood on our own to run and when we appoint someone, you know, it's our combined decision to make that appointment, but I, it does give that person an edge going into the 2016 election of incumbency. Traditionally, county commission elections have had a good edge to the incumbent and that's the one thing that concerns me is that we do preclude a little bit, I think, some of the openness of that seat. I just think it's something we ought to consider. I don't know how the others feel and I'm sorry Gerald isn't here although I hope he's watching, so.
I'm going to respond to that and I disagree with you completely because we didn't know two years ago when John ran that he was going to be done in two years. I don't know in four years if I'm going to be done in four years. And I think by appointing a person just because they say that they don't want to run any more than two years, they don't know what they're going to do in two years. And I also feel it's important to put the very best candidate in this spot. And then if they decide to run when the opening is there, more power to them. It's still up to the voters as to who they want to put in that position. Voters need to be informed when they go to the polls as to who is doing what type of a job.[1741.29] a job. If the voters see that the person that we put in place is poor, they will not reelect them. I think it needs to stand, they need to stand on their own and on the work that they do on this commission, and I think it's very important we put the very best person in this position. This county has a lot of problems, and we have worked very diligently the last years to try to straighten around some of the financial issues that we have, and I think we've worked very hard. And I think you don't just put a placeholder in there for two years when you're making important decisions. If that placeholder happens to be the best candidate, great.
Commissioner Barth.
I would agree with your last statement, and I think when we get resumes or applications, we can, all those things can be balanced and juggled. I do have another question maybe.
Commissioner Barth.
Kirsten, is just a simple resignation from Commissioner Pecus all that's required?
Correct. A letter of resignation, I believe under the statute, is submitted to the auditor's office, who then transmits it to the commission office where it becomes effective on the date that it says it's effective. So in this case, you know, I'm assuming it would be out of ways even if the letter were to be submitted shortly.
Thank you.
I would see this process going forward and, you know, open to other suggestions is that we ask for resumes at this time, and the resumes be turned into the commission office, and I think at this point, those names need to be kept within the commission office and not publicized as to who they are, just as the same as anybody who applies for a job, and that we could look at those resumes and make some beginning thoughts on them. We can't do anything until after John resigns, and so then in January, we would move forward quickly to replace John's position just so we don't have four commissioners. And that being said, as Robert said, when we only have four, the auditor will act in that vacant spot as a vote at the table. Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I'd be decided. I know, I can count. I think we need to set some parameters. I don't think we want eight-page resumes to read through. I don't know, there seems to be quite a bit of interest in this situation, whether it's a caretaker or whether a placeholder or whether it's long-term. Do we use the application process that we use for the county, or do we want just an open resume letter in a couple pages trying to stating what?
I think so. I think an open resume letter, not the county one that we use, that's for a different type of a position.
No, that's an application sheet that's generally used for board applications such as the library board.
So you can use the same thing and then send it out upon request? No, no, you're not.
The recommendation that we're bringing forward from the office, and obviously you can take that or leave that as you choose, would be to just request a formal letter of interest and a resume from interested parties.
And I think they should be sooner than later. Obviously, we've got the whole month of December, but we will be making a decision in January after John leaves.
And we can, you know, we can, one thing that we can certainly do is put out a press release at your direction that you would like to receive applications by a specific date, and we could distribute that immediately and make contact with all local media sources, get that out, have it on our website, and make sure that that information is pushed out and available to all interested parties.
Kirsten, can we put a date on it? If it's going to be before the end of the year, I don't know that we can put a date on it, can we?
I think this process is largely in your discretion. If you want to set a cutoff date, that's perfectly fine. I don't think there's a lot of regulations and procedural rules in place for this process. You get a lot of leeway.
Commissioner Barth.
Well, I think, you know, the eight-page resume would be certainly another thing I would take into consideration, especially, you know, written in pencil. I also think that, you know, we don't need to set a date today for when they come in, and, you know, maybe it's this calendar year, maybe it's the 5th of January, we can think about it.
Well, I disagree there. I think we should set it at least a December 31 cutoff because once we get into that first meeting, we're going to want to.
This could come up under old business again next week as a discussion when Commissioner Benega is hopefully here, and give him an opportunity to weigh in on any of this discussion that we've had. He can watch it online or he can read the minutes, and then it would give him an opportunity if he has any additional comments to weigh in. Commissioner Barth.
You know, I guess potentially Commissioner Pecus would still be a commissioner through a few days next year, so I don't know.
Yeah, we actually had a discussion with Judge Long, and he said my swearing-in could either be, I think we're talking about maybe having the celebration over at the swearing-in over at the old courthouse museum, could be the 2nd or the 5th. I know that the 5th, everybody has to get sworn in, and obviously my resignation would be prior to that.
Do you have any comments on the process since you're still a commissioner?
No, not at all. In fact, people have actually asked me, what is the process? And I said it's really up to the commission, and you guys are going to be designing your own process, although the, you know, interested parties obviously would have some sort of application process that they would take. I know that there've been a lot of people that have asked me, what exactly does a commissioner do and how much time does it take?
Yeah, that's a question.
And, you know, that being said, if I may take a point of personal privilege, I would like to just describe, if you really want to know how much time it is, contact my wife because she knows exactly after 14 years how much time it takes. I can tell you that when it comes to the beginning of the year, we're just getting started with the budget process, and being a commissioner can be as little as 10 hours a week sometimes. I can tell you that when it comes to March and April, you're going to be in tax hearings. You better have an employer that's going to be allowing you to miss a substantial amount of work because we're here quite a bit, up to two weeks, doing tax hearings, and that could be at night, it could be during the day. So you need some flexibility, and I would say the busiest time is going to be when you are in budget hearings, and not only do you do your regular work, but it starts typically at the end of the May, goes all the way to the end of July, and you can expect close to 40-hour weeks, if not over, doing all the work that you need to have done for having adequate time to review all the different department budgets. And it's difficult because if you are, for example, a professional, a lot of your annual meetings take place in June, you will not be able to attend those unless they're Hearns Who Falls. It's a real struggle to, in those summer months, especially if your kids are in activities, you'll be missing them. So if you work nights or if you want to have activities with your kids or grandkids, that will take secondary considerations because every department needs to have all the attention of the commissioners that are going to have their budget correctly heard. Up through the end of July, you're going to have a significant amount of work. After July, you can still have budget hearings take place, so you'll have a little bit less dedicated time towards the budget process after July, but not until the end of September do we pass the final budget. So we've been in circumstances where, you know, we've had budget hearings going well into September, and Darlene I'm sure can validate that. And, you know, you're going to get a packet, you're going to have a substantial amount of reviewing material every week, that when I first started, it took me a good three hours to review it, and you can expect that homework. You have to have it completed before you go to the commission, and the expectation is that you will have all that done. And I guess the slow time really is after we pass the budget in October and November. This is kind of our slow time. So I hope that whoever is interested in this position understands the obligations because this is a unique position in government because you wear not only the legislative hat, but you also wear the executive hat, and you will be liaison commissioner where department heads will turn to you for guidance for one-fifth of the departments that are out there in Minnella County. And you should be prepared for that kind of involvement in those particular departments. So for those of you that are interested, it's a wonderful job. It will get you exposed to all the different facets of what I call meat and potatoes government. It's not the flashy stuff, but it's the stuff that has to be done. And I certainly hope that whoever runs or is interested in this position knows the time dedication that it involves. If I missed anything, you guys please jump in.
I'm going to throw in that we have about 15 liaison appointments per commissioner for the year. Those are usually changed, well, they are changed every January, you might get a repeat one, but those liaison positions include department heads like John mentioned, but they also include outside agencies, and it's up to the commissioner to do their due diligence to meet with their department heads, and some of the outside agencies don't need much attention. It might be once in a year, but those also take up time and evaluations of the department heads. I mean, there's just things. That being said, this is a great job. It's been very fun. I've met wonderful, wonderful people. We have fantastic staff at county. They are very dedicated to what they do, and I think they really like their jobs, as I'd say that probably the commissioners up here do too, really enjoy our jobs. That being said, is there any other comments? Commissioner Barth.
Just one other point here. It looks like the first Tuesday in January is the 6th.
Okay.
So if there's any issue with needing to meet before that, the staff needs to look into that.
Can we push out a notice without putting a date in at this point, and then if we decide there's a date after we've had, let Commissioner Benega at least weigh in, follow up with a date for a deadline?
Certainly.
We can do that, absolutely.
Is there any other, I mean, I know Commissioner Kelly would like to make the 30th of the date, and maybe that's what it'll end up being next week, but I just would like to have, let him at least weigh in.
Yeah, because I just think, you know, once that vacancy occurs, we don't want applications, I don't think, coming in. It's obviously that we can make this well enough known that anybody who has an interest. I would really suggest, John, that you put what you just said on to paper and send it as an op-ed piece to the Argus. I think really, you know, if you want to be a commissioner, they could read that from a sitting, but pretty soon former commissioner.
Yeah, it's very good.
Of what the details of the job are. It's kind of hard for you and I, for the three of us to say it, but for John, it's good because there are some things in there that, it's not just meeting on Tuesday morning, and they have to understand that when they're taking the, moving towards trying to get the job.
Yeah. Anything else for the good of the discussion? Okay.
I would simply say that as I was introducing this discussion, if I left any kind of an impression that we were looking for any sort of a timely notification from Commissioner Pecus, that was not intended in a, did not intend that in any way.
Notice of your death was permitted.
Exactly. All right. I think we can move on. You have your marching orders?
We do.
Okay.
The next item is Minnella County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports?
Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, last night, the Planning Commission met in this room until a little bit late, but we again moved the solar array forward with some changes, and we have the chair of the Planning Commission here, Wayne Steiner, I wonder if Wayne would like to say anything or?
He doesn't want to. Okay, you're fine.
We also have, we also have a vacancy coming up on that panel, and I'm sure we'll be advertising that at some point.
Yeah, I think the press release was ready to go out. Do we know who's retiring or who is?
It's Mark Rogan.
Okay.
And I have another item, so.
Go ahead.
Also, as regards to the Multicultural Center, they're going to have a pancake event on December 7th. Tickets are $6, and I've already bought you guys tickets.
December 7th?
Yeah. So you can always buy more, give them to your friends and make them buy more. I guess that's my only comment there. And we do have the Intergovernmental Board coming up right after that.
Okay. Any other? Commissioner Kelly.
Sunday, Robert and I drove down to Kansas City, Johnson County, which is, help me, Robert, is it west of Kansas City, Kansas?
The lake of Kansas, south of Kansas City.
Monday morning, the sheriff, Michelle, Bill Smith, as I mentioned, the warden went down, I'm trying to think of who else, but there were six or seven, I believe, that went. I don't think Aaron went, did he? I didn't see him.
No, unfortunately, work.
We just kind of passed, we passed in the hallway, and that was about the extent of what we saw of that group because we started a little early. Robert and I were able to sit in along with the consultants that we've hired on a briefing by Betsy Blespe, who's the director, and you're going to have to help me a little bit, Director of Corrections down there. They have a little different setup as far as how they do it, but it was, she gave us a PowerPoint to bring back, and I think we'll get into more detail. I think we'd like to put together a resume of what we saw down there, even though it's directed towards a CGI committee. Every member was there on the visit with the exception of Commissioner Benega. They, a couple of notes, before they built on, they built their new jail, or before they added on to it, I guess, they've got 1,051 cells, I think it is right now. County's about 650,000. They kind of changed their whole format, and they have a central booking downtown on the county campus. It's a, it's a great facility. That was one of the, one of the things that took a hit when we built a new jail is that we did not, they apparently, there was not enough money to do the booking area, the intake area, and now with what we're looking at for additional cells, that's becoming very critical, and that's why the sheriff, I think, wanted us to visit that particular facility. But they also have, they call it New Century, which is a 500 or 400-bed jail about seven miles away, if I remember correctly. They bust, they use buses a couple times a day, they're busting in and out, and the whole booking area is kind of set up, there's holding cells when they bring them in for their preliminary hearings. Then they have another group, and the Director of Corrections, as I understand, pretty much handles things would be like the 24/7 and the work release and all the non-detention facilities. The sheriff has a charge of the detention facilities. She does not answer to the sheriff, if I remember, if that was the way I understood that. Then there's another third deal, which is, I think, Aaron was that the, he was, or Aaron, was that his name?
Court Services.
He was the pre-trial assessment, risk assessment guy. And they sent us back with a lot of information on how they, how they assess them pre-trial, a lot of, based pretty much on JDAI template with adjusted for an adult correction system. And I frankly, because you know, in the past, I've been a little concerned about putting JDAI to the adult corrections, but they, they addressed those concerns, and really I felt much more comfortable coming back from that. It was a great trip, long, facilities were marginal, but the new, their new book correction deal, and they take a lot of pride in it. They've got a lot of people down there, but it's a big county.
Yes.
And they, it was impeccably clean, and it was quiet. Just the whole atmosphere of it running, you wouldn't know you were in a central booking facility, and that's why they booked for a lot. They have additional satellite jails, don't they, more than just the New Century? But I don't know, you might want to add, I know I'm a little incomplete on that, but it was a good trip, and I think the committee now will meet private pretty quick to start putting this back together. I guess we have a conference call in December, is that correct?
I believe that they use the risk assessment instrument for adults, which is what we use for JDAI, which has changed our numbers significantly, but it is geared towards adults.
And they have proof. They went back three years, it was interesting, they took, put the risk assessment tool together, and then they went back three years and pulled all the records, as I understand, pulled everything, and then applied the risk assessment to those people and then tracked how it came out. And so even though, because I asked, I said, what proof have you got that this works? And that was what they point to, and it's pretty accurate. I mean, they know exactly where they were at on everything, who should be out of the population, who shouldn't. I think it'd be a very good tool for us, and I'm sure the sheriff, unfortunately, the sheriff, I wish could have been in that discussion, she could only talk at 10 o'clock, and they didn't get down until about 1:00, I believe, or 1:30.
Robert, do you have anything else to add to that discussion?
I would echo everything that Commissioner Kelly said, and just simply say that it was a very informative tour. I came away from it almost with that overwhelming feeling that I almost need to sit down and digest everything that I heard and sort of process through it again, just to really feel like I was getting the full benefit and full understanding of all the nuances that they have at work there. But it was, it was a lot of good information and really a lot of good programmatic things and physical layout things that they, that they have. All of it seems to be very much based on, be evidence-based on what has worked. They've worked with a number of different criminologists, both there in Kansas and other parts of the country, to develop their tools and the tracking procedures that they're using. So these aren't just things that they're going off on their own and saying, you know, throwing darts at a wall and say, let's track this, this, and this, and see if those work. They're using things that they're backing up with data to be indicators of what really predicts behavior. And then the other thing that I took out of it is a parallel to what all of you have really done with JDAI is the wide buy-in of stakeholders as you were setting up your process as a big reason why that was successful. It wasn't a small group. It, it wasn't a small group-driven, uh, effort. You've got, um, uh, you've got the, you've got the executive, uh, leadership of different organizations, you've got, you've got the courts, you've got, um, prosecutors, you've got defense, you've got, um-
Outside agencies.
You got all of the outside agencies that come into contact. And, uh, again, that's, that's just off the top of my head and I, I really feel like I need to go back and, and look at all the information again, but it, it was, uh, for a, a long trip, it was, it was very much worthwhile and I, I wish, um, that, I, I hope that, that the, the sheriff and some of our law enforcement experts would, would have a chance to brief you because I, um, I had the sense walking through there that, that this all seems like really good policy and really good practice, but as, as somebody who is not trained in law enforcement, I probably am not fully appreciating this as much as somebody who is, is an expert in that field would.
They, um, the Advisory Committee with, with the stakeholders was, I believe she told, 20, there were 20 members of that advisory. That came into effect before everything started and I think it was, um, the results of, the first result was that they hired this Director of Corrections to kinda spearhead the whole, the whole process as to what are we doing? They're in the same boat we are right now, you know? We haven't got enough cells, what are we doing? They were spending $6 million a year transporting the other jails, overflow. And, uh, but a couple things, one is their, their mission statement, I believe, is striving to place the right person in the right bed for the right amount of time.
And that's what JDAI is, pretty much.
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's a JDAI.
It's just about the same.
The other thing is down here, Johnson County Pretrial Services Supervision Outcomes, appeared for court 96.3%, did not commit a new crime 98.3%. So, uh, you know, that, we know that pre-trial is, is a significant part of our population and what we do with them is really what this thing addressed.
Any other questions or comments for liaison reports?
We will show this, I think, at least this particular page will get to everybody in the commission.
We have, we have multiple copies of, of most of the things we received and electronic copies of all of the things.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item is new business. Is there any new business? Auditor Litz, oh, Scott.
Uh, good morning, Scott Anderson from the Planning Department. Commissioner Barth touched on the one, one of the items and that's the vacancy for the Planning Commission. I've been working with Robert and we are putting out a press release, uh, that, uh, we've, and we had a nice discussion about participating in government and this is another way the citizens can participate in local government because the Planning Commission makes very important decisions on land use issues. And I wanna put the word out there that, uh, this vacancy will be open through the 15th of December and, uh, that'll give us time to collect the applications and then I'll provide you with a list of names of people that are interested. Uh, Mark Rogan's term expires. He is eligible for reappointment if, uh, you so choose and if he decides to reapply. So, that's the one item. And then the second item I wanted to just let you know is that on December 4th, we're having our next meeting of our Envision 2035, uh, which is the rewrite, the review of our comprehensive plan. I believe, uh, David Heinhold from our, from the Planning Department sent out, uh, the latest chapter to everyone and everyone on the task force, which is another way that our local citizens are involved with local government is the, the writing, the preparation, the review of our, of our comprehensive plan. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but that's just, uh, little information and to get it out to the citizens that we are continuing to work on our Envision 2035 and the next chapter is complete and go from there.
Okay. Commissioner Barth?
Scott, uh, how long is the term for and how many meetings a year? And what time are those meetings?
There are four, their terms are four years long and, uh, the meetings, there are 11 scheduled meetings a year. There is no meeting in, uh, December because we typically, the, the meetings are always on the 4th Monday of the month and that in December ends up putting it right basically at Christmas time and we have a hard time getting a quorum when people are traveling on vacationing. And the meetings, uh, as you know, last night we met till 10 o'clock at night, so, and they start at 7:00 PM. So, they are an evening meeting, which is, uh, beneficial for people that are working. It's a little easier for you to be able to, if you have an eight-to-five type job, to participate and to be involved. But the meetings can go anywhere from typically an hour to three, three and a half hours. Sometimes, you know, we do have longer meetings. Last night we had a 10 o'clock meeting, but normally they're done in a couple hours.
Uh, Scott, how often do those, um, issues, I mean, what's, what would you say roughly the percentages of rural issues versus city? I mean, it's not city, but encompassing city problems. I mean, most of the time those funding and zoning meetings are about rural issues of Minnehaha County.
I would say 75% of them are, are rural issues that involve Minnehaha County and, and the Planning Commission, uh, the county, Minnehaha County Planning Commission has the opportunity to work with other planning commissions in, in the area. We work jointly with the City of Dahl Rapids, we work jointly with the City of Sioux Falls. So, there, it, it's a very good way for people to participate in, um, shaping the, the, the pathway for not only Minnehaha County, but also working with our joint jurisdiction partners.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Barth?
I would just add that this is the kinda duty you get when you're a commissioner.
Yeah, that's right. This is one of those additional meetings.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Auditor Litz.
Good morning again, Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office and I wanted to, uh, just go over the recount that took place yesterday. Uh, after the election on November 4th, uh, we reported to the state that, uh, in Legislative District Number Nine, uh, State Representative race, that Mr. Steve Hickey, uh, was the top vote getter with 3,027 votes. Paula Hawks came in second with 2,662 votes and Bob Dealstra came in a close third with 2,654 votes. Becky Jasper's was in there, uh, coming in, uh, finishing last with 1,882 votes. The Hawks-Dealstra race had a, uh, determination that night that there was eight votes difference between the two. And, uh, Mr. Dealstra contacted me about his interest in doing a recount and then, uh, the day after the state finally did their canvass, uh, he did bring his petition in, which started a chain of events, uh, saying that I, I contacted Judge Larry Long, he's the presiding judge, and, uh, and what he did was he contacted both of the, the, uh, representatives that are elect and, and set the date for the 24th, which was yesterday. He also, uh, Larry Long also appointed, uh, three, uh, members and one referee. Eric Matt was the referee and a member, uh, Dave Nelson was a member and Dyson Tealer was a member of the, uh, of the recount board. And, uh, so we, uh, we got the, we prepared for it the week before. Uh, we got all the necessary materials out, kept it locked up in the vault and, uh, and, uh, so the first thing that I had them look at was we had some past date mail-in ballots that came in. They're stamped, they're just too late to be counted in the election, they looked at those and agreed they weren't a problem. Uh, they decided that they wanted to go with the machine counted ballots first, which we did, and we ran through all of the precincts and all of the absentee precincts, uh, one right after another. Uh, we did have some ballots get kicked out, we took them to that board and they agreed with the previous board's recommendations and, uh, and we put them back in and counted them again. Uh, provisional ballots were also brought out, uh, where they were necessary, they couldn't look at them, but they could, uh, they could certainly see the envelope on the outside. One of the provisional ballots did count in the race. And, uh, after the, after the recount was over, I'm happy to report exactly the same numbers that we provided for election night came up again. And so, I'd like to, uh, give the, the Auditor's Office, those people down there, the kudos that they've, uh, has been long overdue for their accuracy and their persistence in providing a very good election. Stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Auditor Litz?
Incidentally, uh, you know, Paula Hawks is going to the Legislature, so most of you know that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Is there any other new business? Robert?
One last item, just following up on the, uh, discussion of the, the wide breadth of duties that you have as county commissioners. Um, the, our state association, the SDACC, does put out a booklet, uh, titled, "So You Want to Be a County Commissioner?" And it, it does a very nice job of listing all the duties and responsibilities, county commissioner, really from the time somebody expresses interest in the position, all the way through the full term and, and rights and responsibilities. And, and we will, uh, include, we will send, um, a copy of that to each person we receive a, a, a letter and resume from. I just wanted to point that out to you.
All right, thank you. Is there any old business? Actually had some old business. Um, we know how difficult it is to do budgets and, um, this county has struggled many times with our financial stuff and we have been fortunate enough that we've been able to keep on all of our employees through our financial difficulties. It isn't always the same for every other employer. The Argus Leader has elected to let a lot of its, um, longtime employees go and a few of their new employees and maybe some of their middle-class employees. That being said, we are losing one of our favorites to our group, which is Peter Harriman. Peter has been here for almost every meeting since I started four years ago and he's always been extremely fair, very kind, very thorough, and I feel like he's gotten the story out to the county for what needs to be said. Every week I worry when Peter's gonna put something in the paper, but I have always found it to be accurate and fair. And if he thought it wasn't accurate, he's gonna check up on his facts before he prints it. And we are gonna greatly miss who Peter has and I'm probably more nervous with the next one that comes in, does what are they gonna write? 'Cause I knew Peter was always extremely fair. And Peter, we thank you for the years that you have been with us because you have always been keeping that seat warm and it's, it's been good, it's been very good. Thank you.
Well, I too would like to thank Peter. I thi- I think his coverage has been excellent and it's been fair. If you ever got cheated, it was usually by the headline writer.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, we are, we're really gonna miss you. Because you've got a good knowledge of the county and, and, uh, you know, you know what you're talking about when you're reporting, you know, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
And they're retiring, is that right?
Yeah, I headed the back west.
So, well, good luck, have fun.
Commissioner Barth?
I just wanna say that, uh, his work here is really just a fraction of what he actually does. Uh, he's a true Renaissance man in the sense that his byline appears on all kinds of articles regarding, you know, a huge diversity of issues and, uh, he's an informed, uh, man on so many issues, it's, uh, this part here is just a, a small part of what he knows.
Yeah. Well, Peter, we will miss you. So, when you move on, you just know that you were missed here in this body, so, thank you very much for your service. Any other old business?
Madam Chair, I'm about to propose moving into executive session for personnel, legal briefing and contract negotiations. And I think that we're probably gonna be here for an hour talking about those things and that's another duty that a prospective commissioner has to look forward to. It's not nine until, uh, 10, it's nine until noon oftentimes.
Yeah, most times.
And today could be one of those days. So, I will now make a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel, legal briefing and contract negotiation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. With opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4 to 0. Thank you, we are done.